Guide us this evening as we make our decisions. Thank you for being here this evening. This is the February 25th, 2020, regular meeting of the Newnan City Council. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of February the 11th, 2020. Before y'all entertain a motion, we adopt those minutes.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion is second. We adopt the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. The next thing on the agenda this evening, we have our Newnan Youth Council members here. Ms. Jenkins is going to introduce them.
We have Rachel Penson, 10th grader, from the Heritage Schools. Manny Smith, 10th grader, from the Heritage School. Preston Fulmer, 10th grader, Newnan High. And Michael Franklin, 10th grader, East Calhoun.
Welcome. Thank you for being here this evening. We'll be brief. We also have a gentleman tonight, a Boy Scout here from 247 Central Baptist, here to satisfy his citizenship and the community badge. We appreciate you being here this evening and good luck on the road to evil. Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening are a couple of appointments. The first is an appointment to the Newnan Cultural Arts Commission, Mr. Coricco.
Next meeting, please.
All right, thank you. And the next is an appointment, this is appointment to the Tree Commission, Mr. Coricco.
Yes, I'd like to appoint Mr. Brandon Schott.
Second. Motion and a second. We approve to appoint Mr. Brandon Schott.
Schott.
To the Tree Commission. Schott. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. Mr. Phillips, you have anything this evening?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have anything this evening. Under Street Acceptance Request under New Business by Foxridge Capital LLC for Ashton Place Subdivision Phase III. Ms. Smith, how are you, sir?
Fine, Mayor and Council. Be glad to answer any questions you may have, but this completes what was formerly Foxridge Subdivision, and this is the last of the streets to be accepted.
All right. Ms. Clark, is everything in order? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second. We accept the street as presented, Foxridge Cap- from Foxridge Capital LLC. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. The next is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance, the purpose of adopting an amendment to Article VI, Section 6-14 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to the mixed-use development. This is a public hearing on this issue. I will open public hearing at this time and ask if there was anyone here that would like to come before the council to speak to the issue of the proposed adopting of amendment to Article VI, Section 614 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to mixed-use development district. This is your opportunity to come forward. See no one come forward. Ms. Smith, have you got just a couple of comments on this? And then I'm gonna ask the council for their consideration of-
Yes, sir. Just real briefly, back in 2017, when we looked at the zoning ordinance, the mixed-use development was something that we, this body, discussed at length, and we crafted something at that time. Now, flash forward three years later, the mixed-use development applications that you've received, I don't think embodied what we visioned the MXD to be. This retweaking of the ordinance is to try to get us closer to that vision by specifically saying the things we don't want to see, and including illustrations and guides for future developers to see the kinds of ideas, imagery, structures that you would like to have as a future mixed-use development.
Okay.
Planning Commission did look at it. Planning Commission recommended favorable recommendation.
Spent a couple of months, actually, reviewing it.
Yes, sir. We started back in December with the last year.
Couple of meetings, couple of different meetings. And you can see, Mr. Sears handed it out to you before the meeting. It's some 24, 25 pages long. I honestly think that it deserves more consideration and discussion than we can give it here this evening. So I would ask the council's consideration for a special work session at 1:30 on, somebody give me the date, first Tuesday meeting, pardon me, 10th?
March 10th.
March 10th at 1:30 before our 2:30 regular meeting, in order for us to step through a presentation by the Planning Commission or the Planning Commissioners' staff and have a work session on questions and answers.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion is second. We call for a work session at 1:30 on March the 10th for the sole purpose of the ordinance that we have in the public hearing on. That's Article VI, Section 614, the zoning ordinance pertaining to the mixed-use development district. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. Call, close the public hearing at this time. Okay, the next item is for information only. This is a rezoning request, RZ 202001, Fourth Quarter Properties, 93 LLC, for 8.44 acres located on Newnan Crossing Bypass and Ashley Park Boulevard, tax parcel 087-5043-004 to the Planning Commission. This is for information only. No action needed here. We'll move on to the next item. Contract award, consideration for Link Phase D. Craig, how are you, sir?
I'm well, Mayor Brady. Members of the council, I'm here before you, asking you to consider a contract award as well as the project budget included in your materials, beginning on page 74 and continuing through page 75. Along with the city attorney's office, as well as the PATH Foundation, the Kaiser and Collaborative, our design team, we've been able to put forward what will total a one-mile section of trail. That one-mile section also includes a 200-foot iconic bridge for pedestrians only across I-85, which will connect the current terminus point of the link with the areas around Ashley Park, more specifically, the intersection of Ashley Park Boulevard and McIntosh Parkway near One Life Fitness. All the material, I believe you need to make a decision, is in your pack, but I'm prepared to answer questions if you have them.
Sure. Any questions, Mr. Craig, or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the contract consideration for Link Phase D as presented. Any discussion? Questions? Call a question. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Craig.
Thank you, sir.
Also tonight, approve purchase of specially-equipped Adveco with the Cemetery Department and declare existing equipment for surplus for trade. You have this in your agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. That does it for new business. Under unfinished business, the first item is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance, rezoning request, RZ 201910, Adveco Corporation for 2.65 acres located on Ashley Park Boulevard, a portion of tax parcel 086-5043-008. Ms. Dunham, how are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you very much. This is a request by Adveco Corporation to rezone 2.65 acres located on Ashley Park Boulevard from CCS to CHV with conditions, and it's for the purpose of constructing 800 indoor climate-controlled storage units. The applicant is proffering that the development would be restricted to indoor climate-controlled unit only, and that no outdoor storage or long-term parking would be allowed. The tract is currently vacant and sits adjacent to the Town Place Suites and just southwest of the Home Two Suites. The applicant plans to subdivide the tract into two parcels, and a concept plan has been provided, I'll give the next shot, to show the location and layout of the building. They have also provided an elevation, which you can see up on the screen, showing the look of the development. The facility will have a 600 to 700 square foot office with anticipated office hours of 8:30 a.m. to 6:30, but that would be depended, or p.m., depending on the management company. The tenant access will be from 8:00 a.m. till midnight. Staff has completed an assessment of each of the eight required standards, and I'll give a quick summary on each of them. Staff felt that the use was suitable in view of the zoning and development of adjacent nearby properties, since this site is pretty much surrounded by commercial uses and vacant land. CHV is a more intense use, but with the conditions that are proffering, that will limit the intensity. Also, the proposed development on McIntosh Parkway and the Greason Trail area will need additional, will have additional parking units, so there will be likely a need for this type of use for those residents. In terms of adverse impact or adjacent and nearby property, the greatest would be truck traffic and noise, and that is why staff would recommend limiting hours of tenant access to 8:00 a.m. until midnight. Could it be used as currently zoned? It's currently zoned CCS, and yes, it could be. There's quite a few uses that are allowed in that district. Would the project cause an excessive or burdensome use of public facilities? All of the service providers indicated that they would be able to service the site without any issues. Trips generated would be less than commercial uses, and the calls for police and fire are projected to be quite low, based on the numbers provided by the chiefs included in your assessment. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows the property as future commercial, so the project would be compatible with the comprehensive plan, as plan does not distinguish between heavy and traditional commercial uses. As previously specified, the applicant is seeking a CHV zoning. Self-storage units would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning. Would the proposed use be supported by newer, changing conditions not anticipated by the comp plan? The city completed its full update of the comp plan in 2016, and it shows this property as commercial. Staff does feel the project shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare, and the right to restricted use of property. The area where the site is located is primarily zoned for commercial and office uses. Both the zoning map and the comprehensive plan show this area as a commercial center designed to serve the neighboring communities, and with approved development in the area, there will be a need for this type of use. So in summary, staff found that the development actually met seven of the eight standards. The Planning Commission, at their January 14th meeting, held a public hearing and voted unanimously to deny the request, stating that they did not feel the project was compatible with envisioned uses and existing businesses in the area. However, if the council should decide to go ahead and approve the rezoning, then staff would recommend the following conditions. One, the use should be limited to indoor climate-controlled storage units only, and will be consistent with all plans, profiles, elevations, pictures, and other demonstrative material submitted as part of the application. Two, that no outdoor storage or long-term parking would be allowed, and that three, tenant access would be limited to the hours of 8:00 a.m. until midnight. And that's reported to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Dunham. We appreciate that very much. This is a public hearing on this issue of the rezoning request for the parcel 086-5043-008, 2.65 acres located on Ashley Park Boulevard. Is the applicant here this evening and would like to speak to the issue?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Melissa Griffiths with Horn and Griffiths, 32 South Court Square, Newnan, Georgia 30263. I'm here tonight with Mike Bell from Adveco, and we appreciate staff and the opportunity we've had to work with them on this project. I just want to make sure that all of the materials you received, including our constitutional letter, the proffered conditions, which most of those were the conditions Ms. Dunham just read, along with elevations and pictures are part of our packet for tonight. Hasko, do you mind going to the next slide? If you look at the bottom right corner, this project looks more like an office building than it does your typical storage unit. These are climate-controlled indoor storage units. There's no outdoor storage. There's not going to be any U-Hauls. There aren't going to be any U-Haul trailers or U-Haul trucks. There's not going to be boat storage or RV storage outside. When you drive by on Ashley Park, this building is very consistent with the buildings that already exist right now. If you remember, Planning Commission previously looked at amending the zoning ordinance to allow for storage units in CCS, but what they decided to do was to take it on a case-by-case basis, and so that's what we're asking you all to look at tonight. Unfortunately, we didn't have a full Planning Commission when we met in front of them last month. We only had a few of the members and didn't have everybody present to be able to present everything. We are requesting a conditional zoning. CHV is the only one that does allow for the storage, even though this is indoor and it is climate-controlled. As you see the lot, this is, you know, the way the sellers have proposed to break it up. We will be taking the northern portion, which will be right next to the hotel. The one issue that we do have on the hours of operation that Ms. Dunham just mentioned is, believe it or not, a lot of builders and contractors actually use storage units for some of their materials, and they usually get started before 8:00 a.m. in the morning. So we would like consideration for a starting time of either 6:00 or 7:00 a.m. if possible, just so they can get in and get tools and get out. But the other two conditions were actually proffered from the client when we actually, the applicant, when we applied. So I'm gonna let Mr. Bell just kind of give you a little more information about the storage units themselves and about his company, and then if you have any questions, we're happy to answer. And if there was no opposition at Planning Commission, but if there is, and we have some time, I'd like to reserve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mike Bell. I'm a principal with Adveco Corporation, which is a 30-year-old Atlanta-based developer. We've developed office. We do apartments and self-storage. We've done variable, different things. We've, we've actually are, while we're based in Atlanta, we've developed in 40 different markets in 20 different states across the country, so we're pretty diverse in regards to being able to travel. I mean, Newnan's in our backyard to some extent, but it is not exactly metro Atlanta. I'm here to answer any questions you might have about storage operation. We try to build an attractive facility. We recognize the neighborhood. The neighbors want to see a decent-looking facility. These are brick and stucco buildings, for the most part. There's, there's no metal on the outside typically. These facilities are highly secure. You cannot enter the facility. You can the office, but you can't enter the facility itself without an access code. Office hours are typically, depending, we haven't chosen the final management company yet. It'll probably be either Extra Space or Life Storage. Both are large national REITs and manage thousands of these properties across the country. Typical office hours are 9:30 to 6:00, just like any other business. But however, you do have security, secured, a security code access between typically 6:00 and 10:00 for each one of these. The only real difference between the two companies is that Life Storage is sometimes open on Sunday afternoon, as opposed to Extra Space is closed on Sunday. So it's just a function of which one we wound up choosing, and we haven't made a final decision on that yet. I would like to point out, too, staff mentioned that there would be 800 storage units. It's most likely going to be less than 800. It'll probably be somewhere between 720 and 750. It'll, it'll be less than that amount. We haven't done a final unit mix at this point, so that helps us determine what the efficiency is. But typically, you're gonna get 100 square feet per unit on average, and you only have about 72,000, 73,000 square feet of rentable space, so you'll wind up with 720, 700 to 750 actual storage units on average.
Okay. Is there any questions, Mr. Bell?
My question, since it was stated that there'll be, contractors do use these type of facilities.
I do.
Assuming that you're gonna have an access door that is able to allow trucks or whatever to get in, or am I mis, would that be fair to say, or how would they get into their units, basically?
Well, there'll be a loading area, and basically, I'm sorry, there's double glass doors that open, and there's an, if you're on the ground floor, it doesn't matter. There's a lobby, and you walk into your unit. If you're on an upper floor, you have to take an elevator. But you cannot enter the, the building without an access code.
Right.
So you would have to put in your access code, go into the, you can go to your unit, whether it's upstairs or on the first floor, either one.
But the hallways are wide enough for a truck like to back up if they had a-
Oh, no, no, no.
That's what, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
No.
Okay, so they don't have access to pull in their vehicles, since there is commercial use.
They do not. They can pull up to the door.
Yeah.
But, and there's, there'll be a marked-off loading area, but they cannot pull their truck into the facility. And there's, they, they can't even back up to the door, really.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other question?
The other piece of that section of property, I didn't understand what was, I know that you're not regressing the rezoning for the southern portion of that, but what's that gonna become? Is that part of the deal, or what?
No, that's owned by the seller, obviously, and we're not sure exactly what the final use.
Okay, so you're not buying that?
I think he's trying to sell it.
You're not buying that parcel?
I'm not buy, we're not buying that parcel. So.
Quick question. Is the, regardless of which management company you use, is the office staffed the entire time during your open hours?
Yes, they'll be staffed between 9:30 and 6:00. There's usually one, there's a manager and, and most of the time, assistant manager on, onsite.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this proposed rezoning request? This is for parcel 086-5043-008 on Ashley Park Boulevard, 2.65 acres. Anyone come for that reason? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and ask for discussion among the council members. I, I, let me start that off. We, I've been through several rewrites of our zoning ordinance since I've been taken office, and one of the major rewrites that we did, we rewrote the entire ordinance. It wasn't just a piecemeal. Years ago, we had hours of discussion about this particular topic, and whether we wanted it in the just regular commercial district or heavy, I'll use the word heavy, commercial district, which they are allowed in. And those discussions resulted in us putting it in a classification that it's in now and not in just regular commercial, and you can see why. Storage unit beside regular commercial and hotels and not knowing what would be next to it, zone, commercial. And then we've been through rewrites since then, and every time, we've done the same thing. We've been consistent with what we have done, is my point. And I don't feel like I want to move away from that consistency this evening and grant, grant this application, but that's just my opinion. Open it up for any other discussion we might have, or, or motion.
I was part of that rewriting when I was on the Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
We were very, very specific to keep this, because it was a sensitive area, and so that was part of the Planning Commission's goal, was to keep it in one area. And I agree with the mayor, and I caution if we set a precedent by allowing it to go in other areas. So I'm not in favor of changing this to another area, so.
Okay. Is there, is there a motion from the council?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion is second to deny the rezoning request based on the reasons stated. Any discussion? Mr. Sears?
You need a motion to make the Planning Commission recommendation part of the, accept the report recommendation.
Okay, all right. Can we do that in a separate motion? I usually do that first.
That's the first motion. We normally do that.
Okay, will you rescind your motion?
I rescind my motion.
Okay, first motion would be to accept the report recommendation from the Planning Commission.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Mr. Alexander.
Make a motion, we-
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we deny the request.
The second, motion is second to deny the request. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening is 18 Berry Avenue owner update and request for extension. Ms. Murray, how are you, sir?
Doing well. How are you, Mr. Mayor and Council?
Good.
As a reminder, this, this property was, the resolution deadline did just expire. The owner who we were working with, Mr. Dan Moten, was given a, a extension deadline back in October of 120 days. He had indicated to us that there was, he was wanting to sell the property, and he had a, he thought he had a buyer lined up. Unfortunately, that, that deal fell through, and then also unfortunately, just learned that Mr. Moten passed away about 10 days ago. So, so we, I was contacted by Ms. Carol Newell, who is now taking, I guess, responsibility for the, for the property, or at least the contact person, and I believe is Carol here tonight?
Floyd, Ms. Newell is here.
Yes, she is going to. I believe they do have a, another sale pending, and she was gonna update the council on the status of that.
Ms. Newell, how are you?
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Thank you for asking.
You will state your name for the record, please.
I'm Carol Elaine Moten Newell, and I'm here representing my mother, and my brother passed on February the 12th. I'm sorry.
Ms. Newell, we're sorry for your-
Just bear with me for a minute.
We're sorry for your loss.
Thank you. Um, this property, it's property that my sister and I have taken over the responsibility for, and we have, we have another buyer for it. We're asking that you give us, what is it, 30 days or 90 days, or whatever the, the normal request is, so that we can get it closed. That's all I can say. It, 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 it will go into, what is it, closing within the next week or so, and then I can send you or bring you the information you need.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate you being here, and again, express our condolences to you and your family. Is there a motion for a 90-day extension?
Second.
Motion is second for a 90-day extension. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. Thank you. The next is a public hearing on 21 Berry Avenue, resolution to repair demolish. Ms. Murray?
Yes, sir. This property, we had received some complaints. Staff had received some complaints about the general condition of the property. It's been vacant for, I guess, two to three years. It did suffer some fire damage at the rear, the back of the property, and based on our, our exterior- our exterior, our visual inspections, it does look like the cost of repair would exceed the assessed value by the county. We have contacted the owner, Ms. Teresa Calderon and her husband Doug, and I believe they're here tonight, and the Calderons are going to, they do have plans for the property, and they have agreed to come in to update council on what their plans are.
Yes, if you'll step forward, please. Thank you. If you'll state your name for the record, please.
Yes, good evening. My name is Doc Calderon. I'm the owner of that property. I'm new to this, so forgive me if I say the wrong things or wrong terminology, if that, I will. So this property's been vacant for over a year and a half, two years, as stated, due to the fire. I own other property, we own other property here in Noonan, and we get busy with the ones that are performing properly and trying to get good tenants and whatnot, so I kind of have left it on the side and not worried too much about it, but one of the things that I, and today I went to Mr. Dean Smith to ask him respect to possibly putting another structure there, and he gave me all the guidelines that I would need to start doing that process. At the same time, it is a mortgage property which belongs to a bank, and I have to get with them for them to allow me to do something else. If they don't finance themselves, I have to find another financing company. And I mentioned to him that I would like to probably put a duplex, but it would have to go with the planning department and the commission and all that still. This is the very preliminary that I started last week and kind of got more information today before I came over. So he gave me a timeline of things to do on the city side. The one thing I need to give assurances from the bank that I could do something before I could even go that far. They gave us a little bit of information, and we're waiting for a phone call, which I was hoping it'd be done by today, but we didn't receive a phone call from, it is Bank America, and therefore, I could, I could set in motion the times that I need to go see the zoning department and the planning department, so I can start that process to see if it allows me to put a different structure on there.
Mr. Calderon, how long do you think, do you need a 90-day?
I would, I would say yes, in order for me to get this stuff, this stuff in motion. April 6th was the earliest that I could do something, but not knowing what the bank will allow me to do is, I find a little hard. If, if they do get back to me for then, and I could get into that deadline, I will proceed with that, but an extension to do something like that, whatever is allowed, I appreciate it, I will, I would hope and aim for doing it in less time than that.
Okay, this is a public hearing on 21 Berry Avenue. Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to speak to the issue of the public hearing on 21 Berry Avenue? Okay, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on the issue.
Make a motion to 90-day extension.
I'm going to second that, but I want to ask that you do some yard cleanup if they were, you can't, because your neighbors are not happy.
Sure. And may I ask you folks, if you don't mind, the next door neighbors tend to throw a lot of trash on my side, is there anything? I don't know if this is the right setting for that.
If you'll talk to Mr. Smith about that?
Okay.
That would be, that'd be good.
All right, I'll do that.
Because you'll, you'll need to be talking to Mr. Smith about that during the process anyway.
Okay.
Or Mr. Murray.
All right, it's just, you know, there's nobody there and I see trash.
So that we understand that you're moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll stay in touch with them, and.
All right, so we have a motion, and a second, I'm, Mr. Smith, I appreciate your workload there, having a.
I was going to say, I used to do that a long time ago, but we have the capable hands here of Matt Murray. I feel confident he can handle trash.
All right, I have a motion in a second, before this goes any further. I'm going to call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
The next is a public hearing on 69 ML King Jr. Drive, resolution to repair demolish. This is a public hearing on this issue, I'll open it at this time. Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir, this property, again, we have, we received a number of complaints from the citizens that live in that area about the condition of this property late last summer, early fall. We did send a property, property maintenance violation notice to the owner listed as an Evelyn Ruth Glenn, and we're requesting that they do some repairs to the roof. The roof is sagging, it's got some weak spots, it looks like there's some areas in the fascian surface and all that are pretty damaged. The house has been vacant for two to three years again. We also got complaints about the number of hornets, wasps, and so forth, and there were a lot of wasp nests and all on the property, and children that were playing in there were getting complaints that they were scared they were going to be attacked by these insects, so we did not receive a response from the owner on that, on that notice, and so we just decided to bring, bring this property before council. The exterior inspections and inspections we did, it does appear that the cost of repair is 50%, exceeds the 50% of the assessed value by the county, and the taxes have been paid, the house is, the house is secured.
Okay, so the owners are here this evening?
Yes.
All right, do you have any comment, if you'll come forward, just state your name for the record, please?
Robert White and Evelyn Glenn, Ruth Glenn.
Robert White?
We're aware of the property. We had a relative maintaining the property, which it turned out that he wasn't, so we didn't, we didn't, we got three contractor looking at it, we need to go forward to repair it, so we would like a low extension on it, if we can get the repairs done.
How much time?
90 days.
Okay. All right, is there anyone else here who would like to speak to the issue of 69 ML King Jr. Drive? This is a public hearing on this issue? Seeing no one else come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion on the, on the resolution to repair demolish.
Second.
Is it 90 days?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. You understand before I called the question, Mr. White, that during that 90-day period, what you'll do initially is set up with Mr. Murray, you'll set up a schedule of things that are going to happen during that 90 days, so that we don't come as a council to the end of the 90 days, and then all of a sudden find that nothing's been done. So if you'll give it to Mr. Murray after, tomorrow sometime.
Yes.
All right, so I have a motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Appreciate you being here this evening, thank you, Mr. Murray. Under visitors, this is a request by First Baptist Church to block the streets June the 8th, begin June the 13th, during vacation Bible school. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the request as presented, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. That ends our regular agenda. Does anyone in the audience this evening have anything to come forward, council has got on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to ask the council members, Mr. Bose?
I'm okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm fine, thank you.
One thing that I mentioned the other day in our retreat was the, at a corner intersection where you can't see because of either the vegetation or the fence, and I don't know what our ordinance says about how far back, and I know the sightlines are terrible on several places, and they're, some of them fairly new, so I'd like to look at that and review that and see what we have, and whether we can do anything with what we got, or in the future, not have as much things where you can't see.
We do have a process for that. Typically, when we're notified of a sight distance issue, or we identify a sight distance issue, Mr. Clark maybe should be the one speaking to this. We will actually, if it's on, if the sight distance issue is being created by a property owner with their plantings, landscape, et cetera, we will first attempt to send those to them to give them the opportunity to rectify the situation. That works in some instances, but after several attempts, then we will try to do the trimming at the right-of-way line ourselves, and sometimes our trimming isn't as pretty as what sometimes a landowner property owner is doing. So that's the process that is actually on private property. Now, we do run into situations to where the sight distance is created by trees and landscape and et cetera that's on right-of-way, which is a completely different process. What we're finding in some of those situations is we're having landscaping, median landscaping, et cetera, that when it was planted, it was smaller material, it was fine, but now as it's growing, we're finding some challenges in certain cases, trying to limb up and, you know, maybe even have to release some certain vegetations, which creates a conflict and controversial issue all in itself, so yeah, we need, we got some challenges.
One of my questions is, is the present ordinance, I don't want to say to use the word tight or restrictive enough, that some of that wouldn't happen. I mean, to me, like, I know I can sit there and look at the street, I think the street goes from Central Baptist, somebody just put up shrubs in the last two years right down the corner, and you can't see to the right if you come down that street that when it hits Spring Street, College Street, and I just know that's one of the streets that I just sit there and watch them put shrubs right in, and I don't know whether we can do anything about it now.
We have dimensions listed in the ordinance.
Yeah. They're, they're standards that we.
Whether I go to the engineer department or who, and say, look, I can't see there.
You can report them to me, and I'd be happy to do.
All right. You get them involved, but we do have standards already, so.
Okay, I don't have.
No, thank you.
I'm good.
Okay, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here.